Today's meeting is May twenty second, two thousand twenty-three.
Guys, ready over there?
Ready.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, this meeting's being conducted in a hybrid fashion, is being recorded. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please make it known to the Chair. Um, by agreement with, um, first of all, let's welcome Diane Gale as our newest Select Board member. So, welcome Diane. Sorry, I couldn't be there for your very first meeting. Since the Board has not reorganized and, and that I am out of town, by agreement by myself, Jason and Diane, we agreed to conduct this meeting um, in a slightly altered fashion. We're gonna go through our roll call attendance in a moment. We're gonna pay some bills. Um, and then we actually had a advertised and scheduled hearing that we're gonna conduct. Um, we're not meeting next week due to the holiday, but on the meeting of June the fifth, um, we'll have a much more formal meeting where we'll formally recognize and introduce Diane, and we, the Board itself will reorganize. That being said, present for the meeting, I have myself Doug Moglen via Zoom, Acting Vice Chair Jason Perone, Acting Clerk Diane Gale, Chief Administrative Officer Carl Steinhardt, Chief Administrative Assistant Nadine Signoni, and Secretary Lisa Anderson. Correct, Carl?
That's correct.
Okay, we're doing great so far. So, first thing on the agenda is to acknowledge payables warrant number two, three, three, zero, B, dated May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, twenty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Um, I would need a motion to accept the consent agenda minutes dated five sixteen, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion made.
Doug Moglen will second the motion. Uh, roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Diane Gale abstained.
Thank you. Next item is to acknowledge the write-in at the annual town election for Kevin LaFrance from eighteen Congamon Road. Mr. LaFrance accepted the position on the Southwick Housing Authority and will serve out Karen Reed's two-year balance of term. Review the Cannabis Control Commission letter to the town for the application from Southwick Greenhouses, Inc., Marijuana Cultivators License. So, this is notice from the CCC that an application has been placed, correct, Carl?
That is, that's correct. And, uh, they're giving you the notice under the regulations for you to review it and for this applicant to operate in that municipality. So, you've got, uh, you know, within sixty days of the date of this notification, which was May fifth.
May fifth, right?
That the municipality confirms the applicant's proposed establishments and compliance with municipal bylaws or ordinances. We're a town, we have bylaws, cities have ordinances. So, and you have already executed a, an agreement with this facility a number of months ago.
Okay. Pleasure of the Board, would you like to move forward? And I believe we, if it says, please note, if the Commission does not receive a response within sixty days, it's, the requirement is satisfied. So, we probably should reply to them, either in the affirmative or the negative. Pleasure of the Board, if we want to table this till the fifth of June, or if you're ready to act on this now?
I would prefer to table.
You'd like to make that in the, I'm sorry?
I'll make a motion to table it, uh, June eleventh?
June fifth.
June fifth meeting.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Okay, uh, just since we are hybrid, you need to, if you could, just state your name and, and what you're doing.
Diane Gale, second.
Thank you. Uh, sure, roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Excellent. Thank you. And I need a motion for the Board to accept Brian Drennan's resignation from the Conservation Commission.
Jason Perone will make that motion, uh, to accept Mr. Drennan's resignation.
Diane Gale, second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Excellent. And that took us right to six oh five. Okay.
We didn't do the summer schedule.
What's that?
We, you, you have to accept the summer schedule for the Select Board, but you didn't get it because it was an amendment.
So, we'll table that until the fifth of June as well. If that's okay with everyone, we'll just carry that as old business until the fifth. So,
that's fine.
Folks, take a look at your summer schedules, vacations, et cetera, et cetera. Car show nights, whatever you have going on, and we'll, we'll set a schedule accordingly. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
That'll work.
Okay. Dog hearing steps. Before we get started, uh, Diane, I, um, and, uh, Jason, Jason, have you done one of these yet?
I have not.
Great. This is the absolute worst, absolute worstest part of being a Select Board member in the Town of South. You've been warned. Dog hearings stink. So, with that said, I need a motion to open the hearing.
I will make a motion to open the hearing.
Oh, they were doing the phones tonight at five thirty.
I'll sec, Diane Gale, second that.
Excellent. Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded. We need, I'm sorry?
We had a little sound effects going on here.
Okay. We need a roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Excellent. Let me just get the notice, because I don't see it in the packet.
Right after the hearing steps.
I just see the letter, and then a Dear Select Board Members, and then Chapter sixty-nine is in the folder that I have. So, does someone have the notice? I could read the notice, please?
I have it right here. Jason Perone will read that.
Thank you, sir.
This one, or do you want this one?
No, that's, that's the complaint. This is the notice.
All right, so it is the one I was first looking at, okay.
Yeah.
Regarding the dog complaint dated, uh, May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, concerning dog owned by Mr. Bruce Jura and Mrs. Kathleen Jura, and housed at thirty-nine Lakeview Street, Southwick, Mass. The nature of the complaint is an alleged violation of Mass. General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, concerning a nuisance or dangerous dogs, orders for remedial action, appeal, violation of order, and Town of Southwick, Chapter sixty-nine, section, including, excuse me, but not limited to Sections nine, eleven, twelve, and sixteen, the animal control bylaws concerning dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs. See attached laws. The co-complaintants are Mrs. Marjorie Arnold and Liz Bennett, ACO of the Town of Southwick, four fifty-four College Highway, Southwick, Mass. The scheduled date is today, May twenty-second, at a time of six oh five at this location here in the Select Board Meeting Room.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, all parties are to be sworn in under oath. So, uh, everyone in the room, and if you're on Zoom and about to be sworn in, if you're going to give testimony, uh, raise your right hand. Jason, you're exempt. Uh, that you promised to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Mister Chairman, should we be making a listing of those names?
And as you speak, if you could state your name and address for the record. So, at this time, I'd like to recognize, um, ACO Bennett to make a statement regarding the violation of Mass. General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, and Town of Southwick, Chapter sixty-nine, subsection sixteen, included but not limited to dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs.
I'm gonna say.
Yeah.
I brought my report, uh.
Yeah, Liz's the letter, right?
Yes. Um, Liz Bennett, Animal Control Officer, Town of Southwick, Southwick Police Department, eleven Depot Street, Southwick, Mass. Do you want me to just go ahead and read the report? Okay, so. But probably here today was on a report regarding a report on, I will read the report on four, four, twenty-three, approximately nine, ten hours. A female identified as Marjorie Arnold came to the Southwick Animal Control Facility to report that she and her dogs had been attacked while walking on Lakeview Street in Southwick on four, three, twenty-three. Arnold was visibly shaken as she relayed to this writer, ACO Lizanne M. Bennett, what had happened. Arnold stated that she, her daughter Shelby Shay, and her four-month-old grandchild, who was in a stroller, were walking their dog down on Lakeview Street. Arnold stated that as they were walking by thirty-nine Lakeview Street, she heard a fence drop that was in an open garage, and two dogs came out, ran around from behind a car, parked there, and attacked her dog. Arnold stated that she began screaming for help, and that a neighbor from across the road at forty-two Lakeview came out with a young girl, and that they were able to grab one of the dogs, a Bernese Mountain Dog type, but that the other dog, a pit bull type, kept attacking her dog, it would not let go. Arnold stated that the male came out from thirty-nine Lakeview Street and also attempted to get the dog off of her dog. Eventually, both dogs were contained, however, they were then let go again, and they both came back to attack Arnold's dog and continue the attack. Arnold stated that she was bitten wa, by one of the attacking dogs and showed me a bite wound to her left forearm. Arnold stated that the male from thirty-nine Lakeview said nothing to her and just brought his dogs back into the home after finally being able to gain control of them. Arnold for, further stated that the owner never came back outside, and that she left with her daughter and grandchild to get her dog treated for the wounds received. Arnold brought her dog to a veterinary hospital, emergency hospital, where it received treatment for several bite wounds. I responded to thirty-nine Lakeview and spoke with both Kathleen and Bruce Jura. I advised them that the dogs are under quarantine for the next ten days and issued the quarantine notice. I also gave them a copy of the quarantine conditions. Kathleen asked if she could bring the dogs for a ride in a car. I advised that no, the dogs are not to leave the property. Kathleen stated that one of the dogs, Luna, who was actually a Greater Swiss Mountain Dog, not, not a Bernese, had the show, had a dog show this weekend. I again advised that both, that dogs are not allowed to leave the property and therefore would not be allowed to go to the show. Kathleen asked how the victim, Arnold, was, and I advised her that she was extremely traumatized by this incident. At that point, Bruce Durza stated, "That's not a good word," meaning traumatized. I advised both that this is not a good incident, and there would be action taken against them, and this is not the first time the dogs have gone after someone or other dogs. Bruce Dur, Durza stated that one of the dogs, Larry, a pit bull mix, doesn't like other dogs. Bruce Durza was issued bylaw violation, number BL fourteen, two one nine, for two counts, dogs at large, in violation of bylaw sixty-nine dash eleven. At the end of the quarantine period, don't both dogs remain in good health? For Kathleen, they're attempting to rehome one of the dogs, Larry, who they suspected is a biting dog. Durza stated that they did not believe the bite to Arnold was intentional. Durza stated that they loved this dog, Larry, and it did not appear that Durza was taking the incident with any gravity or seeing a progressive behavior of their dog. They have to be forwarded to the Southwick Select Board for a dangerous dog hearing. Kathleen Durza has been advised of this information. There have been other incidents regarding these dogs. The, if you can see the pictures, there's a fencing. And, so, I, look, I'll just, just describe the house. It is an open garage. They have this fencing, which is basically, um, an exercise pen. It's a very flimsy, just metal fencing that normally you would loop around and make a complete circle with. You put puppies in there and stuff like that. Nothing that would absolutely ever prevent any kind of dog from tipping it over. As a matter of fact, when Mrs. Durza went into the area to talk to her husband, she knocked the fence over. And they had to pick it back up and, and replace it to where it was. So, obviously, this fence is just not going to do it as far as anything goes. Um. It doesn't, and, and the reason that this whole thing bothers me greatly is we've had several different issues with this, these dogs, with this issue. If there was accountability, it wouldn't bother me so much. The house, the, the garage and the driveway is such that you can park an SUV from the, from the, uh, road to the garage, and that's about it. So, we're talking maybe fifteen feet of actual driveway space before you get to the road, and these houses are extremely close together. Last time this happened, I was told that these dogs would be placed in the backyard fenced-in area, not a problem, okay? Can we please do something to make sure these dogs are contained? Obviously, that wasn't mine. And in speaking with both Mr. and Mrs., I kept getting the feeling like it was the other people's fault, like their dog doesn't like other people, or their dog doesn't like other dogs. I get that, I've had dogs that don't like other dogs. Um, so you take the dog and you make sure that it doesn't have contact with other dogs. Um, I was told that this particular dog had a rough upbringing. Okay, and that he didn't want to rehome the dog. First, there was a kind of question, should we rehome the dog? Don't I have to rehome the dog? Um, but again, a lot of things were said as far as why this happened. The dog doesn't like other dogs. Um, she, Mrs. Durza, didn't think that the dog, that bite was intentional. But again, there's no acceptance of responsibility for your actions of your dog, and that's what bothers me, because this will happen again. This is such tight quarters for these animals to be in this situation. I need to guarantee walkers on this road are not going to be attacked by this dog. There was a four-month-old child in a stroller that could have been very seriously injured, very seriously injured, because these two dogs are not small dogs. Eighty pounds or so, sixty, seventy, eighty pounds, doesn't matter. It's the bite behind the dog. This is not a safe situation, and I need reassurance. The people in this neighborhood need reassurance, they can walk down the street and not have to worry about their dog being attacked, or getting in the middle of this, or another four-month-old child being, um, bitten. Okay, that's why I'm here with you. It's, like I said, it's not that we've had so many consecutive four, four issues, four complaints, four complaints of these dogs going out and being nuisance behavior. That's enough for me. Enough for me is, is combining the attitude of the owners or the apparent attitude of the owners with the behavior of the dogs. Accept responsibility for what your dogs have done. Do something about it. Don't tell me you're going to do something about it. Please do something about it. So, now, that has not, obviously has not been done, because we still have this fence. Um, so now I need the Board's, um, help as far as getting this enforced, because this is gonna happen again. This dog is amped up. It's done it twice, three times, four times, gone after people. It's not gonna stop. Unfortunately, somebody got bit this time. And I'm hoping next time. And when that woman came into, when, when she came into my office, the next day, she was still shaking. She was still in tears, she was still shaking. The trauma on that one was just, it was just ridiculous, so. That is mine, my input. Any questions?
So, there's no change to the security of the dogs whatsoever?
I've not seen anything. I've not seen anything. That's unfortunate. They're here, correct? Yes, they're here.
ACO Bennett? I'm sorry. And it's hard, I don't want to, uh, talk over anyone, so I apologize. Diane, did you have a question?
Um, not of Ms. Bennett.
Okay.
So, I have two questions. One, are we in fact having a dangerous dog hearing for both dogs here?
One dog followed the other one, so I would say yes. I would say that we need to ensure that both dogs are contained, because as I said, one dog followed the other one, and we were not sure who actually did the biting. But yes, I would suggest that both are, um, not necessarily considered dangerous, but you know, put under the stipulation of fencing or whatever we're going to be doing.
Okay, so I think you might have answered my second question, but I'll ask it for clarity. We're unsure which dog bit the person.
Right, right, right. We're unsure. We are not a hundred percent which dog bit. The owners think it's one. Cannot prove, because he did not witness it, so we don't know a hundred percent. But we do know both dogs are involved.
Does the person who was bit know which one? Can she describe which?
Oh, we're, we're getting to that, Carl. So, I just wanted it from the ACO, I think.
I have no idea. Okay. You know, she told me before she didn't know, and she just spoke with me again, said she doesn't know.
So, is, is Mrs. Arnold present?
Yes, sir.
Does Mrs. Arnold wish to make a statement at this time?
Sure. And that's Ms. Arnold.
I apologize. I'm just reading what was given to me. So far, we can't spell and get, uh, get that right. We're, we're doing our best over here.
Okay. Do you want her to come sit up?
Uh, whatever her preference.
You want to come sit up? I don't, can you hear me from here? Can you hear me?
Absol, I can, yes.
I don't think she was sworn in, though. She didn't swear.
She came in a little later.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm.
So.
I thought it was six thirty. So, I didn't know where the dog's going, so.
Carl, you want to swear her in, please?
Sure. Do you, uh, swear to tell the, uh, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in this matter for this particular hearing before the Select Board and this evening's proceedings?
Yes.
So, help you God.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Steinhardt. Ms. Arnold, the floor is yours.
So, I went for a walk with my daughter. My daughter had a four-month-old in the stroller, and we go for a walk, um, I go for a walk mostly, she was visiting, and I go the same route. And, um, the Zera's dog, uh, have been behind this fence, but they've never come out before. And so, I walk my dog on the same path almost every day. And this particular day, they, they did not go to the fence. They came from behind one of the vehicles that was in the driveway, and they immediately ta, attacked my dog. I, I do want to, they did not attack me or my daughter. My daughter stood back with the four-month-old in the stroller. Um, they did not attack me. They went right for my dog. And I do the, the one, Larry, the pit mix, I'm not sure.
Right, right.
He, he was the aggressor. The other one seemed to just be the pack mentality.
Okay.
Following the other. We were both screaming for help, because I didn't know what to do, because I've always been told, don't get in the middle of a dog fight, you're gonna get bit. Um, so the neighbor came running out, uh, he grabbed, Mr. Zero came running out, um. They both, uh, you know, grabbed one dog or the other and tried to pull them off. And, uh, my dog was fighting back, of course, and mine is also a pit boxer mix. And I, they, they got them off and somehow, you know, dogs are dogs, and they got back to my dog and me with the adrenaline and everything that was going on in the process. I tried to help my dog, and I got bit. I do not know which one, and I didn't even know I got bit until I was halfway home. So, that's how the threat was going, okay? But they were strictly after my dog. I can honestly say, they didn't come after me, but I stuck my arm or hand where it did not belong. Okay, so in, in, I, I honestly don't know which dog bit me. I don't. Um, I just know I got bit. I was halfway home, and my arm is killing me, and I looked, and I realized I, it, it didn't comfort, but I did get nipped. And I didn't stick around for Mr. Zero or, or Mrs. Zero to come out. They didn't come out, but I didn't stick around. I said, I just want to get back home, and my daughter was there. So, we just walked back home. And I know he had taken the dogs inside. I do know that, because there was nobody in the street. I said, I gotta get, my dog's name is Mac. I said, I gotta get him back home. So, we went back home, assessed the situation. I'm, at that point, I didn't even know if Mr. Zero. I didn't know him, he didn't know me. I don't know if he even knew I lived on that street. And so, um, I went back home and assessed the situation and took my dog to an emergency vet. He had surgery, he had stitches, drain tubes, everything, and, um, he, he's fine, he's fine now. We go for walks every day. Um, it was traumatic. I went to her the next day. I didn't know the Zeras, I didn't know anything about them. I told her, I said, this is what happened. He came out, attacked my dog. Um, I was walking, my daughter, who was a four-month-old child with a stroller, blah, 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 and I got bit. And she said, okay, I'm gonna do something about this. And so, took my dog to the vet that night, uh, a thousand dollars later, in vet bills. Um, very traumatic. I've never seen a dog fight ever, so it was traumatic for me, traumatic for my dog, traumatic for everybody. But it was a dog fight. It, it wasn't, he did not come after me or my daughter. I can honestly say neither one of us was threatened, except I stuck my hand where it did belong. And I got bit. I have since, uh, spoken to the Zeras. They wanted to talk to me. They wanted to apologize. They've been very kind. They paid the vet bill. They said, we, we are so sorry, we don't, uh, we're so sorry. They can't, like, words could not express how bad they felt. And I have since taken my dog now for a walk down past their house, honestly. Uh, I don't even know if they still have the dogs.
Okay.
They aren't under the carport, the fence is down. I don't hear them, I don't see them, I haven't spoken to them. I don't even know if the dogs are still there.
Okay.
So, I can walk by there comfortably. I can honestly say, and I have been walking by there. And I see like wonderful people, so they've, they, like, they love their dogs, they want to take care of them. These happen to be out in the carport, and they trusted them, an electric fence, and it just didn't work at that time. But as far as I can tell, without speaking to them and going to their house and visiting, they've taken drastic steps to keep these dogs from being on the road. I, like I said, I don't even know if they still have the dogs. I honestly don't. I don't hear them, and I don't see them. I don't even know where they are. So, to me, that's huge, because now I can walk my dog and feel safe. And you know, dogs are dogs. Mine's been attacked at the dog park before in Granby, uh, minding his own business, chasing a ball, and he still gets attacked for no reason. So, I mean, I'm just here to, not defending the Zeras, I'm not defending the dogs, I'm just here telling you what happened. And I, I feel so much better knowing that I can walk by there and take my normal walks with him, and he's happy, and we go about our day. So, um, but they, they've offered to pay my medical bills. I haven't received any yet. They, they've been over, beyond, and above, you know, trying to overcompensate for, because they, there's no more of one. I, I appreciate that more than anything, because I didn't know them, so we the next, you know, the, the woman next to me, he, like, don't know. It's darn. Okay, that's, that's what happened.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Uh, Mister or Mrs. Jura, would you like to speak on this matter?
Yes, please.
You might want to come up here, so he can hear you.
I'm Dr. Jura. My wife Kathleen and I live at thirty-nine Lakeview Street. Um, we're the owners of Larry and, and Luna. Um, I was wondering if I, I could ask Wiz two or three fast questions, just to get a baseline. Um, now, there are four incidents here that, that you've listed.
Yeah.
Did you witness any of them in person?
I did not, which is why, um, all right, so eleven, seven. Um, I spoke with a Jeff Collier, and he said that the dogs had come out into the roadway. And I talked to Kathleen, who said, okay, we'll put, we'll Who said, okay, we'll we'll make sure the dogs are in the back. We'll make sure the dogs are in the back. Okay, that was November seventh. So that was a verbal warning. On December seventh. Uh, apparently this happened again. Um. And I talked to, I think Kathleen. Who said, or I talked to you and said. No, Kathleen, this was advised as the second call. Previously issued a verbal warning. Um, gave her a written warning and said, because I was not witnessed. But she was advised that she and officer responded, witnessed the dog's actions. She would then be issued fines, to which she stated she understood. Okay, and then in January. I spoke with you. And you admitted that the dogs were out and about. That the dogs were off property. So no, I didn't witness it, but I spoke to you and you said, yes, they were. Okay, and previous, so that's when you were issued an actual fine. Previous to that, we had just gone with. Um, listen, it just happens again and we witness it, then you will face fines. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but you did not witness any of them in person.
No, you admitted to it. She admitted to it.
But.
So.
So you have no, no way of knowing exactly what happened in any of the cases other than what what you heard.
What you told me happened and what your wife has told me happened. And I consider that firsthand accounts because you own the dogs and you're admitting that this is what happened.
We said they got out. But it has nothing to do with the entire.
Okay, so this was a, okay, so the first issue that we had, you were issued for roaming.
Okay, the first Weaver issue.
Right, the roaming, roaming. Right, so that was it. So this was, this was roaming. You admitted your dogs were off property. That's a roaming violation. You admitted the dogs are off. That's a roaming violation. So when the owner admits it, that to me says this is evidence enough.
All incidents are different.
Right.
And you did not witness what took place in any of the instances. Okay.
No.
Then the second question is. How many times have you actually had contact with our dogs?
Me having physical contact?
Yeah.
Well, there was a day I came out when I talked to you and you told me they were off property, that the dogs were outside in the box. Um, in your garage, and you told me that they. They don't go or they don't stay in there because I asked you why the dog was in the box in your garage. Um, and you said that they like to tear stuff up, so that kind of stuff. Understand, it doesn't need to be my visual. If you tell me that your dog did this.
Try to establish a baseline.
Okay.
What you saw and how you evaluated our dog.
I spoke with the victim.
Okay.
Okay, I spoke with you, the dog owner, and I spoke with your wife, the dog owner.
But you have never had any contact with our dogs to evaluate them in any way. All of your conclusions are based on your interpretation of something other people have told you.
I've spoken to, no, I've spoken to you about the dogs and the dog's behavior. You gave me a full breakdown of Larry, Larry's past. You gave me a full accounting of what this dog was like. So my, no, I've not done a physical assessment on these dogs. It's not my job to do a physical assessment of the dogs. It is my job to take complaints and to listen to all parties. And when the owners, again, when the owners tell me. Yes, my dog is off property and they give me a full assessment of the dog's personality, that's best for me to go by because you know best about your dog.
But you have no way of knowing. About the dogs, their personalities personally.
You've told me personally about the dog.
That's a different story.
You've told me.
Okay, let's, let's, let's limit the back and forth and keep it in front of the board because I believe that the. The request for a dog hearing is made by the ACO and the select board is the finder of fact in this matter, so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll let the select board come to that when we get there.
All right, and and the other question is, how many times have you actually seen the dogs?
I've seen him once. Because the other times, by the time I got there, they were back in the house.
Okay, and how far were the dogs from you when you saw them?
They were in the garage.
I thought it was after the room.
Within fifteen feet.
So basically you have have no personal knowledge of the dogs.
From what you've told me, I have all kinds of knowledge of the dogs.
Um, that's fine.
Okay, my whole, my whole concern is that your dogs, by your own admissions, have been leaving your property. I have complaints that the dogs have gone after other dogs. That's what my basis is to be here to request that the select board intervene and say, hey, this is what we have to do. Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, now, I'd like to. Page, page two and and what you guys have got, the uh, your select board members requesting a hearing. Um, and it, oh, and Liz went into, and then it kind of a summary of the four complaints.
Sure.
And I I would like to walk into them. Because I believe there are several important inaccuracies in what's uh, what's in that. First one, eleven seven complaint with two dogs running in the roadway after passersby. Uh, it wasn't two dogs, it was one dog. It was Luna who was in the roadway. Larry was knocked. Larry's on the property. We have an underground fence which he would not leave. He does run up and down the property and that could have been misinterpreted, but no, it was Luna. Luna went out. As the passersby came by. Luna is a great, greater Swiss mountain dog. And. He's big and barks loudly, but. Greater Swiss mountain dogs do not attack. They've been bred for four hundred years. It is watchdogs, not guard dogs. They will, they're very attuned to their surroundings. And notice any slight change in the surroundings and they will bark. Uh, they've been used for herding and that was their job, was to bark. They do not attack after that. One person. We've got packets for everybody. Uh, the first page in there is actually. Uh, a letter from the breeder of Luna. From Darkmoon Kennels. It used to be near Syracuse where we got, we got Luna. And he describes. The difference in. You know, uh. An aggression versus alerting. They're two different things. What. Greatest Swiss mountain dogs do is to alert. They do not attack.
Thank you.
Um. And if it, there are multiple things I'm knowing about Swisses, um. Um, one of them that that I came across said, there are watch dogs, but not aggressive, booming bark. There was one by Chewie that says, uh, watchdogs, but not guard dogs, real rarely aggressive. Um, that being said, there's a generalizations. Every dog is different. Just like every person is different. We have ample evidence that Luna is not aggressive. She barks and that's all she does. And that's what she did on that day. Went out to the people and barked at them. And that's what they saw. And they might have been scared by it, and that's not right, but it's also not aggression. Aggression to people. The second was, uh, twelve eight, complained the two dogs running into the roadway after. Now, I don't like that after either, not necessarily after, you know, went out in the roadway, but not after anybody. Uh, passerby, one person this time. Dogs displayed aggressive behavior towards persons and other dogs. I don't understand that because there was only one passerby and there were no dogs in that. Um, again, Luna. Went out and barked. I'm not sure about Larry, whether he went in the street or not. He he could have. Because we were having trouble with his collar for the underground fence that went on. Anyway, neither dog attacked anybody. Um. The third is one five twenty-three, same type of complaint, wherein both dogs went out after passerby. Uh, again, it was only one dog that went after the passerby and that was Luna. And again, there was a woman walking down the street and Luna went out and barked at her. And as she went down the street, he followed her and barked as he did. She did not, again, he was was not aggressive to the woman. He did not attack.
Excuse me, Larry went out and followed her?
No, this was Luna, again, Luna.
But you said Larry went out and followed her?
No, Luna. Oh, did I say that? I'm sorry if I did. It was Luna that went out. Larry stayed in the yard. And again, when I got outside, the lady had disappeared down the street. Luna was was walking back to the yard along the street. Larry was in the yard behind the underground fence. There was no way he was involved in that either. Um. The fourth complaint, uh, obviously is 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 a serious one. Uh, complaint about dogs running after and actually attacking passersby. Her daughter, four month old grandchild and their dog. And I I think you should heard, uh, from Marjorie. That there was no attack on human beings, uh. Again, Luna went out and barked. That that's all she did to the bystander and and missing. Larry got out and attacked the other dog. No question about that. Luna was not involved in in the whole thing. I had been, uh, in the bathroom, uh, putting on clothes after I took a shower. Um. I wasn't the best that day. I I had just recently finished a round of chemotherapy, but, uh. Uh, I had put. We got the, the dogs could go out back through our back door and they could also enter the, uh, the carport. Through the the deck in the back. And that's, that's where they would grab it. And we no longer let them in the front yard at all. And we put up this makeshift fence to to keep them in there and it it seemed to work pretty well. So apparently they did knock the fence down and and that's started the whole thing. Um, running so. Again, Larry was not aggressive. Uh, Luna, neither one of them attacked a person. Um. And the definition of a dog attack requires physical contact and harm by the dog. And that has never occurred with humans, with either dog. The fact that Marjorie, um, you know, Marjorie was bitten is due to the fact that. She went to try to break up the dogs, which is a natural reaction, especially when your dog is is being attacked and and she was bitten. That is not considered an attack on a human being. And you have a couple of things in your folder, the next one about, uh, dogs biting people. Trying to reach into a dog's bite. And the fact that it bodes nothing for future attacks on people. It has nothing to do with future attacks on people. And and there's multiple other references you can find online. Okay, they they're all from the same thing. Um. So the other thing, those are the complaints. Then underneath there, there's a paragraph. The owners of the dogs have done nothing to keep their dogs in check. Nothing to be further from the truth. Absolutely nothing. We. We have, uh. Done our best to do this. This is a different circumstance for us. We moved from Lagoa where we had a, uh. A two acre lot that was completely fenced in. Neighbors were spread far apart. So this is entirely new for us. And we, we've been trying to. You know. Land on on our our feet as as far as making sure the dogs are not nuisances or or dangerous. Um. We used to, if we wanted to, we were out in the front with the dogs, we would tie them up. To the carport. They could be outside or on the the driveway or inside the carport. We decided that that was not safe enough. They could always, you know, pull and break whatever was tethering them there. So what we did then was to completely fence in the backyard, which we did. Um. Never had any trouble with with them trying to get out. But. Uh, again, we wanted to be safe. Uh. So we put in the the underground fence, which worked like a charm. Uh, Larry would go out there. Larry was the one we really put it in for. Um. He would not go outside that electric fence. Um, there were squirrels that went by, there were. Cats that went by, there were dogs that went by. He would not go out there. Absolutely not. Um. But I did not like the fact that we did not like the fact that when people come came by, he would bark. And he would run up and down the yard behind the underground fence. And that's scary. And we didn't want that to happen. So we put them in the backyard and only allowed them in the, uh, the carport with that fence in front. So they wouldn't be in the front and and take care of. I should say a couple of things about them. Luna, um, again, the swissy in in your packet with the, uh. The breeder, he talks about Swissies and he talks about Luna in particular. I mean, he. He raised her as a puppy along with the the rest of the litter. And he selected her for show as well. Uh, he describes her personality as. Absolutely perfect and that she shows no aggression, no aggression at all. He takes her to dog shows along the east coast. Um, and anybody that's been to a dog show knows it's it's rather controlled chaos. Many, many people, many, many dogs, all in close quarters, never had a lick of problem. With Luna in those circumstances. Um. So. And the underground fence. We bought dog collar or bark collars for both of them. Uh, again, Luna has rather impressive bark. Um, we don't like to use bark collars unless necessary and and we don't. Um, most of the time I I go out and stop them from barking, but when necessary, we'll put the bark collars on them. So. We've also found a trainer for Larry and he's been under the trainer's supervision to try to break him. Larry's problem was, again, he was was a rescued dog from Arkansas. We don't. Know exactly what his circumstances were, but he came to us and he was, had no aggression to people and no aggression to dogs. Absolutely none. It was like a perfect dog. We brought him to dog parks to socialize him. And one time at the dog park, he was attacked. And has done some significant damage too. And ever since then. Certain dogs, not every dog, not even most dogs, will trigger him. And that that's what happened in in this last instance. So, I mean, we we tried as much as possible. Not to let that happen. We're trying to get him some therapy and get him better because, uh. Some. You know, very probable that 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 was. So anyway. We're extremely, extremely sorry for the trouble. That people have had with Larry and Luna. It's it's unacceptable. It's, it's unacceptable. People should be able to walk and walk their dogs in our neighborhood without fear or, or incumbents. It's not a matter of genetics with Larry or Luna. Larry and Luna are, are good loving animals and I've proved that with our neighbors and in the neighborhood. Neither represents any threat to people. Period. Never shown any real aggression to people, never attacked anybody. To the contrary, and there are people here that will barks for their temper more than I've seen and been with them on many, many occasions. So we're not threats to people and that's supported by multiple sources, including academic, some of which I've presented today, and anecdotal with people that have come here today. In your packets, after we, the things about dog bites, uh, biting up, dog fights, uh, multiple letters from my neighbors. Talking to the personalities of these two dogs. And then these are people that have been with them for, you know, since we've had them for, for two, two to three years.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'm not done yet.
One dramatic pause first.
The fault has been absolutely ours, not the dogs, that all these things have happened. We, we've made mistakes. We've been honest mistakes and we've tried to ensure that our dogs were not dangerous or nuisances while offering the best quality of life possible. We've learned from our mistakes. It's unfortunate that things happened before we hit the perfect combination with them. We are confident, however, with the steps we've taken and what we've dreamed, that we can do it. We'd like to propose the following solutions to this. Number one, we want to continue Larry's therapy to overcome his aggression to certain dogs. Knowing Larry the way we do and the fact that younger dogs respond better to these therapies than older dogs do. We have every reason to believe that it'll be successful. Also, we're going to obtain a full behavioral assessment of Larry to make sure our observations and other people's agree with, with what the, uh, the big behaviorist finds. Number two, while at home, Larry and Luna will be allowed only in the house and the backyard. The combination in the backyard of the fence that's there and the underground fence that's right next to it will prevent them from escaping by jumping, climbing, or doing. Number three, until Larry's therapy is fully successful, we will not walk the dogs in the neighborhood or other neighborhoods in Southbrook. We exercise them in, in, in fields, um, well, like management fields and pasture land and things like that. And we'll continue to do that, of course, because they need, they need their exercise, but. And I cannot tell you how sorry I am that the fourth incident, what I was responsible for. If I had just put Larry's underground fence collar on none of this, there's a pattern is totally my fault and, and I, I, I will never get over this. Thank you for your time and I'm sorry we had to take the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue? Young lady in the back.
Uh, my name is Dominique, you're near forty-two Lakeview Street. Um, in your package, you should have letters from my husband who was, um, a male respondent from across the street along with my two daughters who speak, as Drew said, to, um, the behavior of their Luna. Um, I just want to speak to the dog owners. Um, I feel that they were very negatively reflected in that report. Um, I, we personally own a dominant aggressive German Shepherd. Um, and we have taken steps to protect our home with him and, um, advise and behaviorists. But no more so than the support from our neighbors. Um, Kathy is a responsible dog owner and has shared advice, has shared, um, resources with me, has helped with Kristoff and welcoming people that have come onto our property to abate that dominance aggression that he has. They are responsible homeowners. They are wonderful neighbors. They have supported our family. Um, our daughters take care of their dogs, uh, at times, and they are a wonderful part of our community. They are responsible enough to come to this table with problem-solving action steps, which is more than what was given to them in their previous treatments. Yeah, please take that into account. Our neighborhood loves their dogs. We, I am sitting here saddened to think that I will not see them in the morning and they're going to keep them in the back, but I will make it a point to go and say hi to them. But, um, please keep that in your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have, um, Paula Palmer and Dennis Palmer. Um, uh, we live up on, um, three forty-two North Loomis Street. And, um, so we visit the Zoras frequently throughout the summer. We go boating and, um, we take our little pug with us and, um, both Larry and Luna come to the fence, um, you know, bark at them and, uh, they nose up to each other all the time. And our pug is teeny tiny compared to both those dogs. They always come to the fence for us. They lay down for belly rubs. They're full of love, both of them. Uh, we, we are on and off the property with or without them sometimes. And, um, we have never had a problem with the dogs and both of them always tried to keep them in the back and under control. Um, they don't allow them to jump on people and things like that. So I just want you to know that they are taking this very seriously. Um, they're both brokenhearted overall with all that has gone on. Um, and they will do whatever it takes to take care of the dogs and the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Vice Chairman and Mrs. Acting Clerk, do you think we should continue the hearing or close the hearing at this time?
I've heard enough to close the hearing.
I have a question for the Zoras. Um, the bark collar, are you keeping the bark collars on the dogs as well?
We use them when necessary. Usually it's not necessary, um, they start barking and I go out and, and then stop it. I tell them stop. If there's unusual activities in the neighborhood where they would have multiple, you know, uh, people going by, people talking, things going on in, in the lake. And if they will be barking almost continuously, then, then we will put the bark collars on them. I, I don't like bark collars, but also I, I don't, you know, I realize in the neighborhood.
And just how did they get out to the front yard before? Can they get out through the garage?
No, they can't. Uh, there's a, um, uh, kind of door in the back of the carport that they used to do that. We let them out back and they would go into the carport through the fence and the fence would be there. They, they love the carport because, uh, and the one thing, it's cooler in the summer and if it's raining, they don't get rained on and they can still be outside, but we can't do that. It just does not work under this thing.
In that box that was in the carport, that was their doghouse. It, it, it was a big, huge cardboard box that they used as a dog. They weren't in this like, we didn't put them in the box. They used it as their doghouse.
Dogs love cartons.
But that's all, everything is on.
Okay. Ms. Gail, do you have any other questions? Did that a- address your concern?
I think as long as they commit to what they have said they were gonna do, I'm okay with closing it.
Okay, so I, I. Uh, Mr. Moglan, uh, Mr. Chairman, can I, I just, uh, mi- Ms. Bennett, your, everything you've heard, is there anything else that you would possibly need in place?
I would just request that they have the dogs in the fencing area in the back. Obviously the fencing that you put in the carport, it knocked down when you tried to get in the, it's, it, it, it cannot do anything.
And you said they're no longer in the carport anyways.
Right. If, if there's a fence in the backyard and they have access from the house to the carport to the fence in the backyard, you know, like closing the carport, I don't know. I don't know how you would do that, but having it open to the back of the house, that's awesome. As long as these dogs are not able to get out, run around, because you, you've told me about it, that the dogs do leave property. Um, as long as they are not allowed to leave the property, my concern, like I said, my concern is the, is the welfare of people, dogs, everything walking by. We have a bite here. Um, we have the, you know, all of the stuff that ensued with all of this stuff. I'm not asking for deaths to Larry. I'm not asking for death to Luna. I'm not asking for any restrictions other than keeping the fencing yard. Make sure that they do this because if it does happen again, I mean, right now they're considered nuisance, semi-dangerous because obviously, you know, we have issues. I would love to see the report from the behaviorist. I would love to chat with behaviorists if that's possible, if that way I can help. I'm here to work with you. But so far, the problem that I have, which is why I brought this to here, is that I have not felt from either of you your willingness to resolve the issue. Because you've said, oh, we'll put the dogs in the back before, and that was on number three, number two complaint. And then it happened again. So my issue was that I was not feeling like you guys were willing to work with me. They may be awesome dogs. They have issue with other dogs and that's fine. And I can read all about, you know, Greater Swiss and not get, you know, I can read about the breeds. I have German Shepherds. I can read about the breeds. My German Shepherd, I, one of my German Shepherds, I researched three generations back to make sure he's physically sound. Nobody told me he was a nutcase. And he went after people and I had to come with them. But I mean, do you know what I mean? So it's not, I can read about the breed and say, you know, they're a perfect breed, but individual dogs may be different. So like I said, all I'm asking is that what I got from you guys was not really, you know, oh, it's, it's the dog. It's not the dog's fault, whatever. It just happened and whatever. And what I need to get to is the dogs are going to be contained in the backyard fenced in. That's it. That's what we're going with. Behavior is fabulous. Training, awesome. I'd love to see it. I'd love to see it happen.
Again, oh, I apologize, ACO Bennett. It's harder than I thought to try to run a meeting from Zoom, um, in, in hybrid, so.
Do we make, do we make note of that?
Believe me, it would be harder without it. So.
Mr. Chairman, I got one last thing is, did, did we check if there's anyone on Zoom that wanted to speak on behalf of the? I don't think I personally, you, you've, in my opinion, everything I was going to ask you to put in place, you've already done it.
Right.
Um, that's why I'm, you know, the last thing was, I was going to ask the same thing that Ms. Gail did is why wasn't the bark collar? Or you said you left the, the electric collar off that one time. Um, and obviously, you know, you, a mistake was made. You, the things that I was concerned about was, did you pay her bills? Did you pay, you know, that's, that was very important to me. And what were you going to do to keep these dogs? I've got two dogs and I'd, I'd be sitting here bawling in front of you if I was, had to, had to do anything to, and so I know where I stand on this. So I'm just going to say, I'm all set personally. Everything I need to say is said.
If that's actually going to come true and that's going to be enforced and that's going to happen, I'm fabulous.
Okay, I do one last question. I'm sorry. When was all this put in place? Was this after this ma- this major incident or? It sounds like you, some of this stuff was put in place maybe after some of these other complaints or no?
No, not well. Well, the, the one where we said that we were going to keep them in the backyard, we did not let them in the front yard, ever. We let them in the carport with that.
With that real clumsy, yeah.
So we did not let them in the front yard.
But it, it, it wasn't all at once. It was a process. Some of which predated these, some that came after the incidents in all and, and trying to reach that final point.
So, Mr. and Mrs. Chair, uh, do I have your assurance? If we close this hearing, because we're going to render our decision after our next meeting or direct, we'll deliberate this at our next meeting. But can we have your assurance here in public before we close the hearing that you will uh, contain the dogs to your backyard, um, until this board has rendered a decision on this matter? Larry and Luna.
You have a word.
Okay. Um, if it's acceptable to the others on the board, I would accept a motion to close the hearing.
Sir Perron will make the motion to close the hearing.
Diane Gale, second.
Motion is made in second. It, it requires a roll call vote. Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay, um, at this point, according to this little, uh, handy-dandy fact sheet I have here, the select board deliberates and reaches a finding of fact. I would like for us to do that, if it's acceptable to, uh, the rest of the board to do that, uh, at our June fifth meeting.
I have no problem with that.
And, and to hear this, uh, ACO recommendation and render a decision that will give her time to potentially get a copy of uh, some additional information from the jurors. Uh, in, that will not be provided to the board, but it would be for her to render her recommendation. We've closed the hearing. We can take no further information here. But she can then use that information, um, that was cited here to render her recommendation. And then the select board and the ACO, um, well, the select board will hear her recommendation and then we will render a decision. And I would anticipate that would be at around our, our, uh, June fifth meeting. Or on our June fifth meeting. Is that acceptable to you guys?
Yes. Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that only took a New York minute. All right, um, that was all the, that we were going to cover on our agenda tonight. And I do want to just call people's attention that we will not be meeting next week. It is Memorial Day. There is a parade and a event scheduled at the, it's at the Town Green, the beautiful, beautifully renovated Town Green and at the, uh, Old and New Cemeteries. Um, so Carl, what time is that?
I think it's like mid-morning.
Yeah, perfect. Step off at ten o'clock and then, um, that'll be up by, uh, the plaza and then down to the green. Then there'll be a, by car, there'll be a thing at the Town Green and then, um, a wreath at the old cemetery and then another brief ceremony at the new cemetery. So encourage all residents, um, to attend. Uh, with that, unless there's anything else in front of us, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Jason Perron will make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Diane Gale, second.
Uh, this one's usually informal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll see you all after Memorial Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.